And now declare the regularly scheduled meeting of the Natron County Board of County Commissioners for Tuesday, September 7th, 2021 to order. May we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Hendry.
Here.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Here.
Commissioner Milne.
Here.
Commissioner North.
Here.
Chairman Bertollio. Here. Thank you. Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The Chair entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Milne, second by Commissioner Hendry. Any questions or abstentions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll be abstaining from the vote tonight. Thank you.
Any others? The Chair would enter. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Let's see. And now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of Conditional Use Permit 21-004, a request for denial of a four-spot camping area and approval of a mobile home to be used for storage. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes, rules of the Natron County Commission and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the commission to approach the lectern and state your name and address for the record. Mr. Nelson, may we have county attorneys report?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is a Conditional Use Permit application from Byron Coffee for a camping area and a mobile home for storage. As submitted by the applicant, they're seeking a maximum of eight people per site. They would not allow for fires, smoking, or fireworks. Waste disposal would not be made available to visitors nor would water. Patent quiet time policies would be implemented. Parking would be limited to designated spots with a maximum of two vehicles per site and restrictions of one RV or one tent per site. Visitors would be required to stay within the park's boundaries, which would be marked. In addition, a mobile home is requested by applicant to be used on the property for storage. In UA, this is a permitted use, so I kind of wonder why we need a CUP for that. Here on the map, you can see outlined by the kind of purple line, the subject property, where the application has been made. And this is a little bit view of the area from higher up. Shows that it is northwest of the airport. The current zoning is urban ag, and you can see that that's consistent throughout the This is the center of the north side of the property facing south. Middle of the property facing east. Middle of the property facing west. And the middle of the lot facing north showing stored trailers. So in looking at those points that weigh in favor of approval and denial, those weighing in favor of approval is that the permit will not overburden county services. Permit will not cause issues pertaining to traffic, parking, or population density. Those weighing in favor of denial are that the permit issuance could cause environmental hazards. I believe that the request is for four spots, and this does come underneath the threshold of five spots, which would require the Health Department through its delegation of power through the DEQ to look at septic and waste disposal. So it does come under that threshold. The permit issuance could impact the character of the neighborhood, and the permit issuance could negatively impact public health, safety, and welfare, really for the issues that were So possible negative impacts, if the permit were to be issued, could cause environmental hazards, again impacting the character of the neighborhood and negatively impacting the general public health, safety, and welfare. And not providing visitors with waste disposal options, this could be an environmental hazard. So in the application, there would be no provisions made for waste disposal. There were comments received that this location has had prior issues with visitors dumping their sewage onto the terrain, as stated by the neighbors. I believe this was back during the eclipse. Upon approval of the four-site campground, such a business could alter the characteristics of the neighborhood, and the possible environmental hazards from dumping on site, the possibility of trash being disposed improperly could result in harm. As I mentioned, neighbors expressed concerns regarding fire danger, noise levels, and trespassing. Neighbors do not object to the utilization of the mobile home for storage. Natron County Fire Marshal and the Health Department had no concerns regarding this conditional use permit. So the proposed finding is a fact that the Health Department does not regulate campgrounds with four spots or less. One additional spot would require trash bins, toilet facilities, water, and campsite dimensions. Within the zoning resolution, the development plan, there are no regulations against the implementation of a four-site campground. But then again, that goes back to some of the language issues we've had with the definition of campground. But for purposes of the CUP, we look at this as a campground application. Within the zoning resolution, a mobile home is a permitted use in UA with a CUP. So the proposed motion, staff in the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend denial of the four-site camping area based on the possibility of environmental hazards and possible harm to public health from lack of sewer and waste disposal options on site. The recommendation was to approve the mobile home to be used for storage. It is kind of an interesting dichotomy. There was one Conditional Use Permit application submitted initially for the four-site camping area. The request for the mobile home to be used for storage really came in separately. So it is a little bit unwieldy since you have one application with really two prongs. Probably cleaner if they were submitted separately. And with that, I guess I would stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Nelson? I have one quick one. So had the four campsites not come up, would the mobile home even be an issue?
So it looks like it's a permitted use in the zoning district with a CUP, but I mean, so my understanding back from planning and zoning is that you needed a Conditional Use Permit to use the mobile home for storage.
Okay.
But the way it's worded here, it looks like it's a little bit confusing.
Okay. I'm just joking.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
At this time, I'd ask those individuals in the audience who wish to address the commission regarding CUP 21-04, please approach the lectern. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of CUP 21-004? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? There being no one to speak in favor, at this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to CUP 21-004 to approach the lectern. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? There being no one to speak for or against, I now declare the public hearing closed. Chair entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Milne.
I would move this along. I would make a motion to approve CUP 21-004 for a four-spot camping area and approval of a mobile home for storage based upon staff recommendations of the following conditions: the portable toilet be scheduled to be emptied on a regular basis, trash bins be located at public toilet, picnic tables, campsites, minimum two trash bins be emptied, sewer dumping station be implemented to ensure health of visitors, wildlife, ecosystem, RVs, tents, maintain minimum spacing of 15 feet, quiet hours are posted and enforced, pet rules are created and enforced, and park areas are posted to prevent trespassing to neighbors.
Okay. Chair second.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Commissioner Milne, second by Commissioner North to approve CUP 21-004 with the conditions as outlined by staff in their report. Should it be approved? Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Kaufman.
Mr. Chairman, this one gives me a little bit of heartache. One, because we're working on the regulations around what's required when someone wants to have a campground, and two, I'm nervous about the environmental impacts as well. So for those two reasons, I won't support the motion tonight. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Milne.
With all that said, I'd agree with Commissioner Kaufman. We are rewriting the county planning and zoning, and campgrounds are going to be addressed. I think this would be prime to hold off on this for a little bit until we come up with what the county wants to do moving forward in the future. I also have concerns about the environmental and public safety concerns concerning waste.
Okay. As I'm hearing it, is there anyone else who would? Would you like to bifurcate your motion or withdraw it?
No, I just made it to make, so we could move forward with it.
Right. So I guess my...
I guess I should have seconded it for the purpose of discussion.
Well, I guess my question is for Commissioner, County Attorney Nelson. If the motion fails, can we reconsider? Or if the, yeah, the motion were to fail, can we reconsider this strictly for the mobile home storage?
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you know, again, I mean, it is kind of packaged as one, and so that's what makes it a little bit difficult.
Okay.
You know, I would say, I mean, there was no objection from planning and zoning and from staff to that aspect of it, but because it's all part of the same application, it's kind of hard to pick and choose parts of it.
Okay. Fine. Good enough. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion fails. And now declare the public hearing open for PS 21-004, a request to subdivide Jaffa Industrial Park Lot 7 and 8. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes, rules of the Natron County Commission, and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the commission to approach the lectern and state your name and address for the record. County Attorney, may we have your staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As you indicated, this is an application by EC Enterprises LLC for subdivision involving the Jaffa Industrial Park Lots 7 and 8. The applicant wishes to divide parcel into two lots, making half-acre parcels for future commercial utilization. The current zoning is light industrial. Upon approval of parcel division, both lots would be connected to Wardwell Water and Sewer. Here on the map, you can see the parcel that's subject to the application. It's colored, outlined in kind of a purple color, and it's LI. Again, a broader view shows where the subject property is situated on Jaffa Road off of Salt Creek Highway. So the pink shows the current parcel, and the yellow shows the proposed division. Here's a picture from the middle of the north side of the lot facing south. This is the middle of the north side of the lot facing southeast. And there's the middle of the north side of the lot facing west. And facing north. So the criteria for approval, the proposed finding of fact, the subdivision complies with the development plan and the zoning resolution. Should this be approved, each lot will meet the minimum lot size requirement of a half acre with public water and public sewer. The subdivision follows the Natron County subdivision regulations. The subdivision location is located within an inactive improvement and service district. Notice was sent to nine property owners, and as of today's date, no comments have been received. Staff in the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the Jaffa Industrial Park proposed subdivision, the division of a parcel into two half-acre lots to create a commercial subdivision. And with that, I would stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Nelson? Commissioner Milne.
Mr. Chairman. Eric, I want to commend you on the new slide presentation, apparently all designing, fancy.
That's Holly. I'm just up here reading, so.
On your picture where it's overview, looking down on the property, there seems to be something right at the division line. Is that, that's not, that's like a trailer or something? There's no buildings right next to the property line, correct?
Commissioner Milne, I believe that's correct. I think that the applicant is here and can probably confirm that, but I do believe it's a trailer, not a permanent structure.
Okay.
Any other questions? Commissioner Kaufman.
Mr. Nelson, I'm putting you on the spot. I'm assuming, I think I read this in the packet, that the entry or ingress egress on both would be, like, both would have in and out, even if there's one out. So I guess maybe that's a question for the applicant. I do think I read that, but I just was curious.
Commissioner Kaufman, I think that's correct. I think they would each have ingress egress off of Jaffa Road, but I can confirm that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. At this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the issuance of, or of the, in favor of PS 21-004, please approach the lectern. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you. My name's Eric Grinstead. I'm owner of E&amp;C and said property on Jaffa, and thank you for your consideration of this lot subdivision, and here for any questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Kaufman.
So I think just a follow-up to some of the Commissioner questions of County Attorney Nelson. So there's a building right on that center line. Is that a trailer that can be moved?
That is a trailer on that line, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then both properties, once they're subdivided, would have ingress egress that are separate from each other?
That'd be correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Looks like you're off the hook.
All right. Again, thank you for your consideration.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of PS 21-004? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? There being no others to speak in favor at this time, I would ask those who wish to speak in opposition to PS 21-004. Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? There being no others to speak for or against PS 21-004? And now declare the public hearing closed. Chair entertain a motion. Commissioner Kaufman.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve PS 21-004 with any findings of fact from staff.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Commissioner Kaufman, and second by Commissioner Hendry to approve PS 21-004 along with any findings of fact. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of TA 21-001, a request to amend the text of the subdivision regulations by modifying the improvement and service district requirements. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes, rules of the Natron County Commission, and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the commission to approach the lectern and state your name and address. Mr. Nelson, may we have staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The text amendment proposal that's been brought before you concerns the current requirement that all new major subdivisions in the county form an improvement and service district for road maintenance. This was back in 2013, a requirement that was written in to try to address the lack of road maintenance or a lack of a mechanism in the county to support road maintenance of public roads that are not county roads. I think while the idea was very good, in practice, it has not worked quite the way we envisioned. I think that experience has shown us that the folks that intend to have an ISD are going to have one regardless of the requirement, and those that are just forced to basically establish an ISD to comply with the regulation typically just let them lapse and they become noncompliant. I think in our report, our current numbers show that of the ISDs that have been formed through these years, 46% are current and 54% have been dissolved, are inactive, or not current with state requirements. By way of background, every December, as the county attorney, I receive notice from the state of the special districts, including improvement service districts that are noncompliant. That list is typically fairly long. And then in January, we get another list of ISDs that remain noncompliant and must be dissolved pursuant to state statute. So what we're finding is that it's creating a lot of administrative burden, a lot more administrative regulations for potential subdividers to go through, but it's really not solving the problem which it was intended to solve. So the staff's recommendation is to make certain text amendments to the subdivision regulations, essentially removing the requirement for an improvement service district for subdivisions in your packet, the specific sections of Chapter 2, Section 4, remove all language and add a subdivision where required to join or merge with an existing improvement service district if contiguous to the existing ISD boundary. Chapter 3, Section 2, 2, delete. Chapter 4, Section 5, 8, delete. Chapter 4, Section 71, delete sentence. Quote, "A new or merged improvement service district shall be mandatory for all major subdivisions." And finally, a major subdivision application form, delete the last sentence on page 50. The Planning and Zoning Commission is also recommending that this be adopted, and with that, I would stand for any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Nelson? All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
At this time, I'd ask those individuals in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the text amendments to come to the lectern? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? There being no one to speak in favor, this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to TA 21-001 to approach the lectern? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? For third final time, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? There being no one to speak for or against TA 21-001? I now declare the public hearing closed. Chair entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Milne.
I would make a motion to approve TA 21-001, request to amend text of the subdivision regulations as proposed by Mr. Nelson with all language for 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5.
Okay.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Commissioner Milne, and second by Commissioner North to approve TA 21-001 with the amendments as presented by staff. Commissioner Hendry.
The only thing that, you know, I agree that this probably is not working, but in these subdivisions, they need to do something because they all think that they're county roads, and maybe this didn't work, but in the future, I wish there was something that we could do to convince them that they are on their own, that all public roads are not county roads, and so, you know, maybe this didn't work, but I wish there was something we could do.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, so just a question of maybe Commissioner Milne. So we're obviously engaged with Logan Simpson right now on the rewrite, so maybe they have some ideas on how we can do this better? I don't know what that would be, but I know it gives me pause to do this, even if it's failing. We just don't have a mechanism for people to care then for their roads in a way that, you know, the county contributes to. So I'm sure there's a solution out there. I just want to make sure it's, we find it.
Commissioner Milne.
Mr. Chairman. So, yeah, I believe we're going to talk to them about this. We had our last meeting yesterday, which I hope was canceled because I missed it.
I hope so, too.
But, yeah, no, we, I plan on looking at this along with other things. The problem is, is this is an administrative solution to a problem that while they're public roads, they're for those individuals on that road, they need to step up and take responsibility for the condition of their road. It's not the county's. And while, while it's a public road, and they may think it's a county road, maybe that's what we need to do with subdivisions is, is when they come into play, you know, be upfront and not, you know, yes, try to explain that a little bit more to them, that, you know, it's your vehicle, it's your suspension on that hot rod that you're going to be trashing if you don't take care of your road. But, yeah, I don't know what the solution is, but they've got a lot of experience in different areas, writing code for different counties and whatnot, so we'll definitely utilize their experience.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I could just add to that.
Yes, sir.
So we have had discussions, you know, with developers, and I think there are some folks interested in trying to come up with a solution. The other thing I would also like to remind really the public is that the county does have a very generous dollar-for-dollar match, up to $25,000 a year. I know a neighboring county to the north has a similar program that's not nearly as generous. So I think there are some carrots out there to help promote folks to, you know, voluntarily put an ISD together, and then they really have access to a really good funding source. And so maybe we need to do a little bit better job of just advertising that and getting the word back out there. So I think it's certainly on our radar. We know that if this text amendment goes through, the language and requirement will go away, but the need to maintain these roads does not.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
One other comment, Mr. Chairman. I know we've had several times, people have come in and talked about Coal Creek Road in that area out there, and we've been after them to get that ISD going out there, and the last I heard, it was going. They decided to get the board going and grade some roads out there once a year, and so we've hounded them enough that, and their neighbors have, that it's finally working, I heard. So it just takes a while. That was it.
Okay. Any other comments? There being none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this point, we are finished with our regular meeting. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the commission? There being none. Commissioners' comments? Commissioner North?
Since our last meeting, I didn't think I'd ever see it again. There's a few of us up here that are old enough to remember Vietnam, and I never thought that I'd see something even similar to that. What's happened in Afghanistan has really disturbed me as far as leadership that we have and/or lack thereof in so many areas, and leaving the military equipment, as well as Americans, stranded in that country after we'd put so much time into it. I don't really have a whole lot of words to say for it, other than the fact that it's sorely disappointing because the people that are in charge are old enough to remember what happened in Vietnam, and yet they let it happen again, only this time it was worse.
Thank you. Commissioner Milne.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wasn't really going to say, talk to this much, but we received notification of something that was occurring in the county a little bit. I just, I just kind of wanted to reiterate, the county should be...
I just, I just kind of wanted to reiterate, the county should be, it should be equal application of law for all citizens across the board, whether it's, it's what they need to do or the punishment, whatever happens. If you single out one special group, whether it's, for example, somebody giving leniency to a group that received the vaccine or they didn't, that's wrong. If they're going to do that, they need to make it equal across the board, where if the people, whether it's their belief, medical restriction that keeps them from getting the vaccine, or whatever it is, it doesn't matter. If you're given a special process, a special whatever to those people that are receiving it, you need to do it for the others as well, that can't or choose not to. It's not, it's not up to the government to make a special class of people based off of a vaccine. That's all I suggest.
Thank you. Commissioner Hendry.
Well, I would agree with Commissioner North about Afghanistan and leaving all that equipment over there and the, that we had, whether it's guns, airplanes, helicopters, whatever it is, that was a, really somebody missed it big time. The other thing that I've got is, is we lost a rancher out west of town. Keith Forey passed away with COVID. And, and that was, that was kind of a shock, you know? I mean, he's a relatively young guy. It isn't like an old rancher out there. He, he was running a pretty good outfit, so. But it's really sad. This is, this COVID is serious. It's taken people. And so it, and it isn't over. But that's all I have.
Commissioner Kaufman.
I don't have much. The only thing I would say is that we're coming up on the 20-year anniversary of 9/11 on Saturday, so I would just remember that and take a pause and say a prayer, and thanks to all the people who have done what they did. And I can't believe we're here 20 years later, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I would echo what everybody else has said and have nothing else to add. At that, we are adjourned.